Okay, good evening. We are on the record. Today is Wednesday, October 22. It's 6:06 PM. President Rommel, and all nine members of the Jersey City Municipal Council. Would everyone kindly rise to observe a moment of silence in memory of John Losowski, the retired Jersey City police officer, the father of Christine Paculski, and father-in-law of Bob Paculski, and William Mauer from DPW, father of Donald Mauer, our CFO, who passed away this and was married yesterday?
I am not my uncle the best way it last Thursday.
McDonald?
Hello. Good health, I can say this. I'm small king, my mother's. Hi from the heights.
Very much for your standing for salute to this flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of the United States, one nation, united, indivisible, liberated, and composed. Thank you very much. On behalf of the council president, members of the council, in accordance with the New Jersey Public Laws of 1975, Chapter 231, the Open Public Meetings Act, better known as the Sunshine Law, adequate notice of this meeting was provided by mail and fax to the Jersey City Reporter and the Jersey Journal. Additionally, the annual notice was posted on the bulletin board of the first floor of City Hall and filed in the office of the city clerk on Wednesday, November 27, 2013, indicating the schedule of caucuses and meetings of the Jersey City Municipal Council for the calendar year 2014. In addition, at the time of its preparation, the agenda of this meeting was similarly disseminated on Thursday, October 16, 2014, at 4:00 PM to the mayor, council, business administrator, and the local newspapers, posted to the world wide web, so I can certify as to our total compliance with the Sunshine Law. Could I have a motion to add 3F and Resolutions 10Z8 and 10Z9?
Motion.
We have a motion by Councilperson Lavaro. I'll give one of the ladies over here, Councilperson Coleman, the second, to add those items. Councilperson Kudjuski?
Aye.
Ramchall?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Yun?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Lavaro?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, council members. First reading ordinances, I'll read their titles into the record. We have some scratches, we have three scratches from the first reading. 3A is City Ordinance 14-137. It's an ordinance supplementing Chapter A, 351, Executive Orders and Ordinances of the Jersey City Code. To create a new classified position for program development specialist aging. 3B has been withdrawn. 3C has been withdrawn. 3D is City Ordinance 14-140. It's an ordinance supplementing Chapter 332, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 2, Traffic Regulations, Section 332-5, One Way Streets, repealing the one-way south designation on Jackson Avenue between Communipaw Avenue and 240 feet south, the North Building Line of the new, of the West District Police Precinct, Section 332-6, U-Turns, prohibiting a U-turn on Jackson Avenue between Communipaw Avenue and 240 feet south, North Building Line of the West District Police Precinct, Section 332-9, Stop Intersections, designate Jackson Avenue and Communipaw Avenue as a stop intersection in 332-12, No Passing Zones, designating Jackson Avenue between Communipaw Avenue and 240 feet south, the North Building Line of the West District Police Precinct as a no passing zone, and supplementing Article 3, Parking, Standing, and Stopping, Section 332-22, Parking prohibited at all times, designating no parking anytime on the south side of Clinton Avenue from Jackson Avenue to a point 50 feet west, on the north side of Clinton Avenue from Jackson Avenue to Seedler Street, on the east side of Jackson Avenue, Clinton Avenue to Communipaw Avenue, on the west side of Jackson Avenue, 240 feet south of Communipaw Avenue, the North Building Line of the West District Police Precinct to Clinton Avenue, and Section 332-23, No Stopping or Standing, designating no stopping or standing on the west side of Martin Luther King Drive, beginning at the northern limit of the West District Police Plaza to a point 130 feet south. E has been withdrawn. So, council members, F is City Ordinance 14-142. 3F, City Ordinance 14-142, is an ordinance supplementing Chapter 332, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 3, Parking, Standing, and Stopping, and Article 9, Parking for the Disabled, of the Jersey City Code. Amending Section 332-69, Restricted Parking Zones in Front of or Near Residences of Disabled Drivers. Council members, we're voting on 3A, 3D, and 3F. So, it's up, it's three ordinances, 3A, 3D, and 3F. B, C, so it's A, D, and F. B, C in the air, withdrawn. Councilperson Kudjuski?
Aye for introduction.
Ramchall?
Aye for introduction.
Bajano?
Aye for introduction.
Yun?
Aye for introduction.
Osborne?
Aye for introduction.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye for introduction.
Waterman?
Aye for introduction.
Lavaro?
Aye for introduction.
We have a 9-0 vote for the introduction of what is really Items 3A, 3D, and 3F. We have a late scratch, council members, the Corporation Council is calling 10Y and 10Z, he's withdrawing, 10Y and 10Z, they're being withdrawn. And we have to vote on the claims last this evening. Vote on the claims last this evening. Council members? Okay. Council President, council president, members of the council, we have on our table the agenda. It's Item 11I.
You don't have copies of it. It's on your agenda.
It's on, you don't have it, it's on the last, the title is on the last page of your agenda. It's an ordinance, it's Ordinance 14-129, An Ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City, Replacing the Danforth Avenue Transit Village Redevelopment Plan with the New Danforth Industrial Park Redevelopment Plan. It was tabled 7-0 prior to the close of the public hearing on a motion by Lavaro, seconded by Ramchall. As I understand it, it's the council's pleasure to defeat this ordinance at this time. Am I correct, Council President?
That's correct, and just for some background, so another agreement has been determined, and I'll come to-
Okay, so let's just get, let's get a motion to remove 11I. 14-129, by Councilperson Rivera, the second was by Councilperson Coleman, and this is to remove it from the, for consideration. On the motion, Councilperson Kudjuski?
Aye.
Ramchall?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Lavaro?
Aye.
We have a 9-0 vote on the motion now, council members. To consider, not the adoption, it's going to take me a second.
Asking everyone to vote this down, and a new one will be introduced.
Okay. Council members, we're going to take a vote to defeat this ordinance, so your votes will be in the negative. Councilperson Kudjuski?
No.
He doesn't vote on it.
We're voting it down.
We're voting it down.
And a new, a new ordinance will be introduced with amendments to the plan. You vote.
Councilperson Kudjuski votes no. Councilperson Ramchall?
No.
Bajano?
No.
Yun?
No.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Lavaro?
Aye.
We have a 9-0 vote on the motion now, council members. To consider, not the adoption, it's going to take me a second.
Asking everyone to vote this down, and a new one will be introduced.
Okay. Council members, we're going to take a vote to defeat this ordinance, so your votes will be in the negative. Councilperson Kudjuski?
No.
He doesn't vote on it.
We're voting it down.
We're voting it down.
And a new, a new ordinance will be introduced with amendments to the plan. You vote.
Councilperson Kudjuski votes no. Councilperson Ramchall?
No.
Bajano?
No.
Yun?
No.
Osborne?
No.
Coleman?
No.
Rivera?
No.
Waterman?
Aye.
Council President?
No.
May just give me a second. Council members, this ordinance was defeated, zero votes in the affirmative, nine against.
Initials?
Just please give me your initial on that, please. Council members, we're to second reading ordinances. Second reading ordinances, we have Item 4A. City Ordinance 14-130. It is an ordinance approving a 20-year tax exemption for a commercial hotel project to be constructed by Columbus Hotel Urban Renewal LLC pursuant to the provisions of the Long Term Tax Exemption Law, New Jersey Statutes Annotated 40A:20-1 at Sec for the property designated as Block 13003, Lot 1, C 3.80, on the tax map and more commonly known by the street address as AT Columbus Drive.
If I'm wrong, sir, I have passed by this construction site for a while, and this is be the only hotel that will have air rights, in which they will go directly into the PATH station. I see it right now as they're putting it up. There's a little hole there, waiting for this amendment to be moved. So you're going to give a 20-year abatement for a building that's going to have air rights going into the PATH station? And I find that amazing. Why would you do that? No, what, no, today it is raining. They're not going to be rain on. So I'm looking at this, and I seen it done, I saw the destruction going up there, and I'm, I'm finding this somewhat amazing that you would do this. Why would you give a 20-year abatement next to the PATH station, in which they will have your own little walkway into the PATH building? That's a plus. I don't know of any other hotel in Jersey City or Hudson County that has that, and you're giving a 20-year abatement? It's like we're giving the city away. But meanwhile, in December, those poor people who can't pay their taxes will lose their tax lien, so they get a 20-year abatement, they get something that no one else will have. When I left my building and came here, I had, I got hit by the rain. We're giving someone a sweetheart deal, they will not get hit by the rain, going down to the PATH, in which you have 152 rooms, so let's say there'd be no more than probably 300 people enter on the train station. It doesn't make sense, and I'm quite, and I know for a fact that Councilman Philip would be screaming at Healy if he proposed this, because I heard him scream quite loud. I mean, I recognize his voice over eight years when he screams over abatements. It doesn't make sense. This is one, he's saying, it's not in order, it's not, it's though, it's a very bad, it's a very desirable property. People fight to get a seat in the PATH, and these people in that hotel will have a ringside view and getting on the train, which is, it's incredible. Here we are putting in more things about transportation hubs, in which there are no seats, and which I tell my husband, I don't want to take the PATH anymore because I want to be able to be there. That's how bad it is, and we're putting in more things right next to the hub, in which we're not saying, well, we need other ways to get to Manhattan. This is ridiculous, and I don't want to hear that we're collecting more money. The reason why you're collecting more money, you're using assessment on that land based upon 1988 revow. Of course, it looks, it is less in terms of land value, but the mayor stopped the revow. So when you use that argument, we're collecting less money, well then, Mayor Philip, why don't you institute the revow? You kind of, kind of have it both ways, and I think that's absolutely wrong, but I'm really annoyed to see that we're 20 years, 20 years for, and I see it's being built, it's like, they know it is a done deal. So when I passed by it today, I saw the little hole there, waiting for the city to say, okay, and if you don't do it, their facade is already messed up, because they already have it situated certain area that they can walk out and be connected to the part of the PATH, which is called the new station there. It's like, they're waiting for you to say, to do your job, because they know you're going to do this job, and I think it's absolutely wrong. A hotel is a business, they're for profit. Why should my tax dollars go for subsidizing a for-profit business? I don't, I don't receive money from this particular hotel, when they make a, a earnings and they make dividends, I don't receive that money in, in, on my tax bill, so why am I subsidizing them? I mean, I can see why churches who, who serve the poor, why they are not for profit, I understand that, but this is a commercial business, who is, who is responsible to, is one of, the people on the board. They're, they are a for-profit business, and the people of Jersey City is subsidizing it, I don't care how you look at it, it's a subsidy. If it wasn't a subsidy, they wouldn't come here to apply for it, and it's wrong. And putting all hotels around equally, because we have a number of hotels in Jersey City, this particular hotel will have an advantage of a direct access to the, to the PATH station and this 20-year abatement. It is absolutely ridiculous. There is no free market in Jersey City. Now, I was raised with the idea of capitalism working in America, that's not true in Jersey City. It is not a capitalist society. It's more run on the idea that we will subsidize two groups, the very, very low and the very, very high, and the people in the middle, too bad for you, you are the losers, and I think this is absolutely wrong. And this hotel, mind you, would be built even without an abatement, because of the simple fact that it has a little connection to the PATH station, that is totally, it'll probably, it'll be, they'll have the advertisement, but what, where they will not put the advertisement is that they're being subsidized by Jersey City taxpayers. That's where, that will not be in the advertisement, and I think it is appalling, appalling, and I hope Mayor Philip hears this, it is appalling that I have to subsidize a for-profit hotel in which they have the right of way under the air right to go directly into the PATH and not get wet, while the rest of Jersey City, who is going to Manhattan, will have to, you know, be out on the rain and have the wind blowing against them, have the elements heckem, but we're giving them an abatement for this. I mean, this is like communist Jersey City, that's all I can say. Communist Jersey City, and I resent it, I really do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Say your name, please, we have a new court reporter.
The Ver Washington, Jersey City. Is anybody here tonight that's representing the hotel, because I just want to know, is the people of Jersey City getting jobs? Are we guaranteeing jobs, and either labor, the building of this building that's going up, and will Jersey City residents, you know, benefit for it? Is anybody here that let us, let me?
There's a project labor agreement that applies to this, which requires a certain number of Jersey City residents. The project labor, there's a project labor agreement which has requirements for making the good faith effort to employ local residents, as well as it's a total, totally union job.
And we end up with some permanent jobs for Jersey City residents?
Excuse me?
We end up with permanent jobs for Jersey City residents?
Permanent jobs for Jersey residents.
Yeah.
There's no guarantee of permanent jobs for Jersey City residents.
Because, you know, we'd be, being that we give them the abatement, that would be a good idea for them to make sure that at least some taxpayer money go back into the city, for people that live here.
There's a living wage ordinance that was passed over a year ago that requires maintenance workers and security workers at these sort of projects to receive a living wage. In most cases, many of these folks are local folks, because for a maintenance job and security job, they generally employ local, if not in the general area around this.
At least, my point is that we'd be getting some benefits from it, by giving them the 20-year tax abatement.
There are 100 construction jobs for the construction period and 40 permanent full-time jobs.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing?
Jason Berg?
Yeah, mhm. I just wish you guys would just stop with your abatements. Steve Philip was against the abatements, saying that everyone does want to hear the old story of the old stamp man. We learned something very interesting the last two weeks ago when you guys passed the trash transfer. I just wish you guys would just take this and say no. Doesn't take much to be no. The purpose, the purpose of this body and everybody that is elected is to listen to the people. It doesn't have to be a majority of the people, it has to be a majority of people who are present.
But it has to be about this ordinance.
Yes, but I'm just saying, I'm saying that you guys have to get off the yes train, start listening to the people, because if everyone, if, if the people of Jersey City, the 20,000 property owners said no to your taxes, you guys would go bust the day after, and that would be nationalizing their property to a nonprofit. This is a point, but please, guys, we need progress, but we don't need to rape our taxes to get ahead. To throw the baby out with the water, and you need the kid, is repugnant. Thank you.
Good evening, Council President. My name is Eddie Torres. I'm a Jersey City resident.
Aye.
Excuse me?
Good to see you.
Two Ds, I E.
That's right.
T O R R E S.
God Torres, thank you, Ed.
Okay. And Councilpersons, greetings. I'm here in support of this project. I live on 37 Neptune Avenue, and I give my address, because as the person before me spoke, I am not in the rich part of the neighborhood, but I don't consider myself in the poor part of the neighborhood either. I consider myself kind of middle class, so, and it's through hard work, through hard work that my wife does, that we are able to consider ourselves like that. I'm in favor of this ordinance. The hotel in downtown Jersey City, I was born and raised in downtown Jersey City, I'm a taxpayer, I own a piece of property here in Jersey City, and one of the main reasons I'm also in support of this thing is, yes, it's by the, it's by the Groce Street PATH Station, yes, the Hyatt is by Exchange Place, yes, we say that the taxes won't bring revenue, but I think that if we just realize what happened with the Super Bowl last year, how much revenue came through Jersey City because of the hotels that were built in downtown Jersey City. Like I said, I was born and raised down here, people didn't want to come to the waterfront when I was a kid, people didn't want nothing to do with the waterfront, the only good, there was never any good thing happening if you were hanging out by the waterfront. Today's a completely different program. I have two children, one's 25 years old, one is 21 years old. Both of them work at Restaurant Row in downtown Jersey City, one of them is right across the street from the Groce Street PATH Station. I am thankful every day that that restaurant opened up there. So my 21-year-old, 20 years older last year, who, anybody raises teenagers, could keep you pretty worried that night, had a job to go to, had a place to go to work, and come home, and I could say, thank God, he's staying out of trouble. I am a construction worker, I'm part of Plumbers Local 24. Yes, it does give jobs to the construction workers, yes, there's 100 jobs that are going to come out through this project, this project might last one year. I was working in Harborside last week, Harborside 10, the person that took me on the elevator was a family that grew up on Fifth Street between Jersey Avenue and Co. They all have jobs in that building. She runs the service elevator for us construction workers to go up and down. She has a permanent job in Jersey City, she told me she's been there for the last 20 years. Yes, there is permanent jobs in Jersey City for Jersey City residents when you vote on this.
Thank you.
Your purpose is not just to see what the voters want, your also purpose is to see what's good for the city. This is good for the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Stacy Jackson, I'm a Jersey City resident, Stacy Jackson. I'm a Jersey City resident, born here, raised here, lived here all my life. I'm into construction, I've been into construction since 97, and I support this for a
this.
Thank you.
Your purpose is not just to see what the voters want, your also purpose is to see what's good for the city. This is good for the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Stacy Jackson. I'm a Jersey City resident. Stacy Jackson. I'm a Jersey City resident, born here, raised here, lived here all my life. I'm into construction, I've been into construction since 97. And I support this for a lot of reasons. I support it for the reasons that my local have opened up a program to Jersey City residents to let apprentices in and give them an opportunity, an opportunity to pay taxes, to get a job and pay taxes. And I've been seeing, you know, Jersey City residents out here with the opportunity doing construction and, you know what I mean, I waited for a long time because I can't go through Jersey City without being harassed by people that's looking for that opportunity. I mean, the whole Jersey City right now is like knocking on my door, kicking on my door, looking for help. And right now, this hotel will help a lot of people take care of their families, get off their streets. And far as the tax abatement, you know, it's like, no, you, you know, the tax abatement, everybody pay taxes, everybody. Everybody pay taxes. I understand her pain, you know what I'm saying? She's like, why we gotta do it and they don't gotta do it? Know what? If this pass, it gonna give not only people an opportunity to work in the hotel, it gonna give us the opportunity to build the hotel and then that hotel gonna generate a lot of money for the city on top of that. And the truth is, no, I, I, I was born, it is what it is and what it's gonna be, it's gonna be. You know what I'm saying? I could see that hotel being developed, you know what I mean? I don't see too many readers why it shouldn't be, you know what I'm saying? It, it, just put it like this, it's a very necessary thing for not only the construction workers, but also for them young kids coming out of high school and don't have nowhere to go, don't have no applications to fill out and need an opportunity just so they can, so, so, so they can, so they can help their parents pay bills or pay their own bills. So, you know, that being said, I, I, my heart do go out to her. I, I understand that. But know what? You born in a world where there's nowhere on this planet you gonna go without paying taxes anyway. You gonna buy, you paying taxes when you born, you gonna pay taxes when you die.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
It's a public hearing on the ordinance.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilperson Coleman, seconded by Councilperson Osborne. Close the public hearing. Councilperson Gudziewski.
Aye.
Ramchall.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yoon.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Council President.
Aye.
We have a 9-0 vote to close the public hearing for final adoption of City Ordinance 14-130, item 4A. Councilperson Gudziewski.
Aye.
Ramchall.
Aye.
Bajano.
No.
Yoon.
No. Actually, actually, the hotel project, you know, much better than residential project as a taxpayer of Jersey City. So one of the hotel, and they gives a hotel tax, this case they expect around $400,000 a year. And so municipal service costs much less than, you know, condos and residential apartment, we understand. But give us a 20 years tax abatement to commercial project, so it's for property organization, it's not for taxpayers. So I say no.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
Council President.
Just to quickly point out some of the benefits here for Jersey City, some of it was articulated by some of the speakers. The city will, will collect over the 20-year life of this abatement, nearly $11 million in taxes to the city itself. On conventional taxes, the city's share would be approaching $8 million. So that's $3 million more, $3 million more dollars in revenue in conventional tax, in taxes for, for Jersey City as a whole. On top of that, as Councilman Yoon pointed out, there's $400,000 in estimated tax revenue for hotel tax revenue. That's 400,000 times 20, 20 years, you're talking $8 million, is that 8 million? $8 million over the 20-year life. Put into that the 100 construction jobs, the 40 permanent jobs, these are good jobs that are going to be, I mean, it doesn't solve our employment issues and employment problems, but it begins to chip away at that and provides real business and more, more, more retail out there, more retail opportunities for folks in, in the downtown area. So as a whole, hotel taxes, hotel abatements are kind of an, an easy one. It's a, it's a layup. It's a win-win-win for Jersey City. And so my vote, aye.
Adopted 7-2 with Council members Bajano and Yoon voting no. The City Ordinance 14-130, item 4A. 4B, City Ordinance 14-132, is an ordinance of the City of Jersey City and the County of Hudson, New Jersey, providing for the special emergency appropriation of $7,500,000 for the payment of contractually required severance liabilities resulting from the retirement of city employees. This is a public hearing on the ordinance. Anyone wishing to be heard?
Yes. This has been probably since 2005, we have been bonding for people to leave city government. And it's one of the things that former Mayor Phillip condemned Haley for. And I don't see why we have to bond for this. Number one, we talked about the money we had in reserve, which was at that point $18 million, but I was told $10 million was actually more available. We had that money set aside for grants. So we have really $28 million. Why are we, why can't we use that money to pay for the people leaving government? This is a serious issue that every year we have bonded. I kind of stopped counting, but the last time I counted, it was like $35 million that we have bonded for terminal leave. Now, if you add up 9.5 or 7.5 million dollars over a period of 10 years, you're talking about maybe $90 million or $70 million that we constantly got to put to bond. This is serious money. Now, the reason why I bring this up, because our city is in such a rush to do this, our ratable base is the reason why we constantly have to bond, because our ratable base is lower than it was since 1988, thanks to, to the abatements you give away. But this is showing that the city is not on a, they gave a 2.1% to, to taxpayers, but we have to bond for people who are leaving city government. Bonding is not free. We gotta pay money back. So what will this cost us in a period of time, including all those other bonds that we had to pay through the years?
We have to pay this off 20, over five years, 20% a year. We aren't necessarily going out for the full $7,500,000.
Yeah, but since 2005, and I didn't keep tabs, I stopped counting at 35 million, what have we been paying for terminal leave? It's a lot of money. All this money we probably be getting in from, from all these abatements. How come we can't balance our budget? I mean, I was told there was $28 million in reserve, you took $10 million off the side in case the grants did not come in. So that means that we have 18 million. Why can't we use the money? Our fiscal year is nearly over in two months. So that means we have 18 million. Why can't we pay for this and not give taxpayers a bonding debt? It's not just this 7.5 million, it's last year's 9.5 million, it's the previous year 9.5 million, it's the previous year 9.5 million. It's going all the way back to 2005, when the state allowed the cities to either bond for the money or pay for it in cash. If, if you add up from 2005 all the way up until now, we have paid a serious amount of money that we roll over, over the time. I remember when the mayor said he wanted to do a desk audit and see what jobs were important. I'd like to know if he did that, because we're, we're bonding for this. This doesn't have to be bond, it could be part of our budget and pay for it like we pay for our salaries. We know we're gonna have this every year. In fact, yesterday, when Shay was here, he mentioned that 100 new office, 100 cops may have the potential to retire. We know, but that's gonna cost us at the end of the year. Why isn't that money put aside for salaries? Why can't we see the budget? This to me is, is, I'm glad it's not 9.5 million, but it shows me that the city is not on fiscal roll at all. And it shows me that the abatements has hurt the ratable base and the reason why we constantly are bonding.
Thank you, Mrs. Waller. Public hearing.
Jason Berg? Wow. 20%. Can we get it lower? That sounds like a Sears credit card. Really? 20% and paid off.
Now, this will be paid off in five years. 20% of whatever the ultimate number will be this, these special notes or the special appropriation will be paid off in five years. It's not long-term debt.
Well, 20% is still usury. That's not the interest rate.
We're not paying 20% interest rate.
It's too many people talking, please.
We're not paying a 20%. You're putting it in there like we're paying a 20% interest rate. We're not. We're paying 20% of this, of this money off every year until it's over.
So what is 20% of five years? How much will we be?
Roughly 1.5 million a year.
And how many employees, retirees are going to be on this segment of bondage to the people?
I think 146.
Excuse me, sir?
This one, I think, for 146 employee, if I remember correctly, yeah.
Has anyone confirmed that?
146.
No, I'm just saying.
The council.
Thank you, 146. And that would be paid off for those 146 over the five-year plan, plan at 1.5 million dollars for the turn.
I don't know how many are gonna retire. It depends on what happens with the state and the pensions. You may only have 10 retire, you may have 100 retire. There's no, you have no way of knowing who's going to retire and how many.
Well, this council needs to address the robbery of our state pensions from, by our wonderful legislatures, because they're all being burnt here. And you guys are here doing what you can. The more voices, the more municipalities are there talking to our legislatures, remember, without, without the people, you, the electorate, taking part and putting forward your voice and telling legislatures that they're off-key, they won't listen to, if they're not listening to the 500-plus municipalities, then what is the purpose of government?
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
You're not talking on the ordinance, Jason. Thank you. This is a, anyone wishing to speak on this ordinance?
Motion.
Second.
By Councilperson Coleman, seconded by the Council President. Close the public hearing. Councilperson Gudziewski.
Aye.
Ramchall.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yoon.
Aye.
Osborne.
Before I vote, I just would like to say that, okay, aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Council President.
Aye.
Final adoption. Councilperson Gudziewski.
Aye.
Ramchall.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yoon.
Aye.
Osborne.
Before I vote, I just would like to say that, okay, aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Council President.
Aye.
Final adoption. Councilperson Gudziewski.
Aye.
Ramchall.
Great job by our Public Safety Director, and I vote aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yoon.
You know what, actually, this is a problem of Jersey City. You know, March 10, when the mayor presented a proposed budget for the 2014, he allocated $2 million for this purpose. But after amend the budget in November, at the end of October, he removed the $2 million from that. And I still remember that, when those issues showed, when the mayor was councilman, he said, this is a bad policy. I agree with him, still I agree with him, this is a bad policy issue, continues to pay off that their city employees retire. But unfortunately, we have no other choice this time. We have to pay them. You know, that's our, you know, contract. So I vote aye. But I hope in the future, from starting 2015, we should put at least $2, $3 million on the general budget. It have to be, we have to try to correct the problem now on. So I vote aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
I would like to echo what Councilman Yana said, and some of the points made by Yvonne are absolutely correct. And we did plan to put money aside for this. And then we had overtime expenses and the amount of $2 million that we had planned on using towards this. That was why I was so frustrated the, the last time when we focused on the budget. And I mentioned then that I would vote for the budget that time, but not again if something like that happened. And so in keeping with that, I knew that this was going to come up and I will vote aye. But next year, it can't happen.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
Council President.
Just to clarify for next year, Councilwoman, we can't put aside 7.5 million. We'd have a hefty tax increase on the Jersey City residents.
But we can begin.
We can put aside some.
We can give them money of time.
Absolutely. But just to clarify for the, yeah, for the viewing audience. So not looking to put aside 7.5 million, because we anticipate these will be, continue to come with continued retirements. But we certainly can, can make some, find a responsible way to, to deal with this. And unfortunately, this year, this is how we have to deal with it. So I vote aye.
We have a 9-0 vote for the final adoption of City Ordinance 14-132, item 4B. On the item 4C, 4C is 14-133. It's an ordinance supplementing Chapter 332, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 2, Traffic Regulations Amending Section 332-5, One-Way Streets of the Jersey City Code Designating Colden Street Between Grand Street and Prior Street as a one-way north-to-west counterclockwise. This is a public hearing on the ordinance. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Rivera, seconded by Councilperson Ramchall. Close the public hearing. Councilperson Gudziewski.
Aye.
Ramchall.
Aye.
Bajano.
Yoon.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
LeVarah.
Aye.
We have a 9-0 vote. For final adoption, Councilperson Gudziewski.
Aye.
Ramchall.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yoon.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
LeVarah.
Aye.
We have a 9-0 vote. For final adoption, Councilperson Gudziewski.
Aye.
Ramchall.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yoon.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
LeVarah.
Aye.
We have a 9-0 vote for the final adoption of items, or actually, ordinance 14-133, item 4C.
Just comment, thank you so much for voting for that. I am the president of the Board of the beloved Community Charter School, and that will make it safer for our children in the morning and in the afternoon. So thank you very much, Council.
Welcome. No commercials. Item 4D, City Ordinance 14-134, An Ordinance Supplementing Chapter 332, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 3, Parking, Standing and Stopping of the Jersey City Code, Amending Section 332-24, No Parking During Certain Hours Daily, excuse me, During Certain Hours Designating 87 Feet on the South Side of Mercer St, Mercer Street, West of Tours Avenue in front of Hudson Catholic High School, Has No Parking Monday Through Saturday, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. This is a public hearing on the ordinance. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second.
Who made the motion?
Johnson and Ramchow.
Seconded by the Council President. Who closed the public hearing? Councilperson Kuduski.
Aye.
Ram Chao. Ram Chao. Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lavarra.
Aye.
We have a nine-zero vote, close the public hearing for final adoption. Council, Councilperson Kuduski.
Aye.
Ram Chao.
Aye.
Bajano.
No, and I'll tell you why. The McKinley Square developments around there, parking is almost impossible around there now, and now they're taking away, uh, what, another 10, 15 spaces? I say no.
It's 87, uh, feet. Councilperson Yun.
Uh, aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
No.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lavarra.
Aye.
We have a seven-two vote, voting though, Councilmembers Bajano and Rivera, for City Ordinance 14-134, Item 4D. Our last, second reading ordinance is Item 4E, City Ordinance 14-135. It's an ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City, adopting amendments to the Journal Square 2060 redevelopment plan. I'll be 101 in 2060, Mrs. Waller.
Okay, that'd be nice. Um, could you please explain this particular amendment? The amendment to the ordinance, please? The amendment to this particular ordinance, the last one, 135?
Here, very simply, this ordinance amends the plan to increase the building base height to accommodate substantial retail and removes reference to an easement requirement, requirement at the 10 Journal Squ, Square Site. That's the former hotel on the square site. This amendment also will clarify floor-to-ceiling height requirements and plaza area requirements.
And what will the city get out of this, since we are basically increasing density? What will we get in, as this, you know?
They'll get a better-looking-
No, 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 the, the city gonna give something away and make something more dense, we should get something in return. You know, it's give and take. Are we getting anything in return?
This is the change to the redevelopment plan?
Okay, but the, the city gets something in return because you're basically increasing the density of an area, and most towns, when they do that, get something in return.
So, I would never, I wouldn't characterize, uh, the arrangement as, you know, I wouldn't characterize, characterize the arrangement as giving density to any particular development site, and then in exchange for that, getting something in return. What we're doing here is trying to adjust for the realities of the, of the site, and it's something that we did discuss, um, when it was introduced at caucus, um, but that it's being done to, um, raise the base of the site and also to allow for the development to, um, I guess, best use, uh, the area.
What, what the developer has done is, is, is dictating to us that they are asking for more density, and you're saying, "Okay." But I think that when the developer does that, we should be asking something in return. We're talking about an area that is finite.
Yeah.
And I think that there should have been something given back to Jersey City. I don't want an argument, but it sounds like we're always giving everything away.
Ivan, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're increasing the height for retail purposes, right, so that the retail spaces-
To allow the base of the building.
For the area, right? Gene, did you answer the question, Gene?
Either one.
Well, that's what it, it's going to increase the height for, so they have retail on the bottom.
Right.
So that means that someone is gonna, gonna make money off it, and there should have been something from the city that's saying, "Okay, you give this, and let's get something in return." I, I'm sorry, that's how I, I think-
Let's allow, uh-
Come to the podium, Gene.
My name is Eugene Paulino from Genova Burns, John Thomas and Webster.
Hold up that other mic, Gene, that's better.
Uh, as I understand it, these-
Hold up, Gene, and-
Yeah, sure.
And, uh-
There are four technical amendments. Uh, the amendment that, uh, Ivan is talking about is, uh, increasing the, the podium height. It increases the retail, uh, space available. It does not increase the density.
Does not.
Um, does not increase the density. The other, uh, changes are to allow more people, more public access to the plaza area, to increase this, uh, the, to allow for, uh, drop ceilings and to allow for, um, a retail along the corridor, if you could picture this, from Sip Avenue, uh, toward the, what's called Concourse East, toward the PATH train station. From, so, from Sip Avenue, behind the site, near the Hudson County Community College. It goes right through to the PATH train station. It allows for retail along that side. The Planning Division, um, believes, and the Planning Board believe that they wanted more activity on that side, so that's, they've required more retail. That's, that's it, very, four relatively minor technical changes.
Thank you. I, I understand, it's what it used to be, but I'm still saying, I'm still saying, someone's gonna make money, and the city basically is getting nothing out of the deal. I am not saying I'm against having retail there, but the other hand, I, I think we're doing a very poor job negotiating, that's it.
Thank you. So, public hearing, anyone else?
Yes. I am, the Bourbon, Washington. You know what? Damn if you do in Jersey City and damn if you don't. It's, and you know why? Because we used to have all them shops. We used to get the 16 bus from Lafayette to Journal Square to Public Service, with Community College. We had Rainbow Shop, we had a bakery over there, we had a hot dog stand, you got off the bus, and some Sip Avenue, and we're all the way into the PATH where they built it up. Come on! Come on! Let's get this city back right. Journal Square has been dead a long time. We lost our movie theaters up there and everything. Everything is down here. Get that part of town a new birth. Thank you.
Thank you. So, public hearing on the ordinance, is there anyone else wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Council President Lavarra, seconded by Councilperson Coleman.
Maybe you want to, we have Osborne to that.
Osborne?
We did it together, but give it to Osborn.
All right, let me get the whiteout out.
We wanna, we're trying to get you home to dinner, with your wife.
Close the public hearing, Councilperson Kuduski.
Aye.
Ram Chao.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Council President.
Aye.
We have an eight-zero vote to close the public hearing. Councilperson Rivera, out of the room. For final adoption of City Ordinance 14-135, Item 4E, Councilperson Kuduski.
Aye.
Ram Chao.
I.
Aye.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Still away.
This is where I'm walking in. Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
Council President.
Aye.
We have an eight-zero vote with Councilman Rivera, out of the room. Final adoption of City Ordinance 14-135, Item 4E. Councilmembers, to the speakers' list.
Rob, uh, Robert, before we move on to the speakers' list, can we, um, can I make a motion to defer to 10Z6?
10Z6, second.
Oh. It's the resolution appointing-
All right, we have a motion to defer to, I'll read the title, to 10Z6 by the Council President.
The six.
Seconded by whom?
Me.
Seconded by?
I.
Bajano.
Is Curtis here?
Before we do that, Councilperson Rivera-
Curtis here.
Do you would like to vote on the Journal Square 2060 redevelopment plan?
Yes.
All right, that, we'd make that a nine-zero vote for Item 4E, City Ordinance 14-135. Now we're deferring to Item 10Z6. 10Z6, Councilmembers, is an appointment, a resolution appointing Rami Aeed, Aeed Esquire, as a full-time judge in the Jersey City Municipal Court.
Mr. Aeed.
On the motion, Councilperson Kuduski.
Aye.
Ram Chao.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lavarra.
Aye.
Okay.
Take the podium. It's short.
This'll be very short.
Wait, 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 no, 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 we have to vote.
No, we gotta vote, Chris.
Yeah, let us vote, Chris, then.
Don't be presumptuous. You give an acceptance speech and you get nine no's, and you go home with your head in your hands. On 10Z6, Councilperson Kuduski.
Aye.
Ram Chao.
Rami, Aeed, congratulation, and make us proud.
Thanks.
What's your vote?
Oh, Council-
Hi.
Bajano.
Remy, I know you for several years. Don't ever change, you're a good person.
Thank you.
Councilperson Yun.
Aye, congratulations.
Thank you.
Councilperson Osborne.
Uh, I vote aye, congratulations.
Thank you.
Councilperson Coleman.
Welcome aboard, I vote aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Rami, if anybody deserves this, it's you. Uh, I thought it was a great pick, congratulations, and definitely vote aye.
Wait, wait, she's not getting you, so, you gotta, yeah.
I vote aye.
Um, Romney, I, I wanna say something to you because I know you're the first Egyptian judge, and for me, that's an honor, being, um, a minority. But I wanna leave you with this saying, because it's so important when we as minority get in certain positions, because we bring hope. We really bring hope. It says, "Being the first to cross the finish line, make you a winner only in a phase of life." It's what you do after you cross the line that really counts. So I hope that pha, that phrase stay with you, because you're crossing the finish line, and there's so many people that's coming behind you that you setting the precedents for. So I vote aye, and I'm glad to vote aye, to be a part of electing the first Egyptian judge in the municipal court. God bless you.
Thank you.
Council President.
Rami, I will echo the, the words and sentiments of all my colleagues, and, um, you're very deserving of this, immensely qualified, um, first and foremost, and I think that's, uh, that, that speaks volumes in and of itself, so, um, I think you're a great choice, I know you'll, you'll be a great judge, and, um, you'll show great, uh, um, what's it called, judicial temperament on the bench, um, and as a judge, uh, I hope you'll move some of those, uh, cases along and, uh, continue to keep our, uh, our, uh, the, the, the violations to be paid through the city, so, um, congratulations. Are you also the first Muslim judge?
Uh, I believe in Jersey-
In Jersey City?
Yes, statewide, although.
Oh, lot of firsts here tonight, so, um, commend the administration, it's a great choice and great pick. Congratulations, Rami. I vote aye.
We have a nine-zero vote for the approval of your resolution.
Don't cry now.
You need to stay still up there.
Of course. Uh, thank you for, uh, the kind words, I can tell you how much that means to me, I really, really thank you for, um, for the well-withe and the kind words. Uh, I also wanna thank you for all the trust and confidence you place in me. I'm truly cognizant of the responsibility in this role, and, um, I'm planning on serving with humility and utmost respect for every individual that comes through the courthouse. So thank you again for the trust and confidence and support, I'm truly appreciative to all members of this council. Um, I'm really looking forward to this opportunity. Um, my whole life in the law so far has been in public service, whether it's the AG's office, the Corp Counsel's office in Newark, and now to continue this, this will be a culmination, uh, being a resident of Jersey City, to continue here in this capacity, in my, in where I live and where I reside, and to serve my fellow residents is a great honor, and I thank you for that opportunity. On the administration side, I'd like to thank the mayor for the appointment, uh, I'm very appreciative of it, and I wanna thank the Corp Counsel, Jeremy Farrell, for the assistance in shepherding this process along, thank you. Uh, and finally, um, to all my friends, residents, uh, fellow neighbors who are here tonight in support, thank you very much, I'm really appreciative as well, and, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Jamie Vasquez. Jamie Vasquez.
John Lynch.
One, one second, one second.
Jamie Vasquez.
Let's, hold on, hold on.
Robert, uh, great, uh, good friend of Rami, just wanna say something, John Lynch, can you make a exception, please?
Well, he's on the speakers' list. We have John Lynch on the speaker's-
So, so let, let's do this appropriately, so, John, as much as I love you, you've got a number of friends here who, um, probably, who signed up on the speakers' list, if you would just choose one representative from your group to, um, speak, and then, then we have to go through the regular speakers' list. But only one representative from the, the group, and, otherwise, the rest have to go through the regular speakers' list.
Speakers' list. How many are actually on the, MTS? You're not on the speakers' list.
Uh, no, no, Mr. Lynch.
You're not on the speakers' list.
No.
Mr. Lynch is.
Yes.
Just wanted to make a comment and congratulate-
You're gonna waive your time, Mr. Lynch?
Oh.
Are you gonna give up, are you gonna waive your time?
Yes, I'm just waiting.
Go ahead, Mr. MTS Sayet.
I am, also. I'm here to congratulate, uh, the mayor and the council for nominating and appointing, uh, the first Egyptian Muslim judge in Jersey City. Uh, I'm sorry.
Identify yourself.
Oh, my name is MTS Sayet from Jersey City, friend, friend of, um, Rami. Um, like to congratulate the mayor and the council, um, for approving his appointment and the first Muslim and Egyptian judge in Jersey City, rather than Hudson County, I was looking at, and that makes, uh, a room and a window of opportunity for others as rather than Hudson County, I was looking at, and that makes a room and a window of opportunity for others as a policy of the administration to include all the other communities in this administration. And I want to thank everybody of you for nominating and congratulations again. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Judge, you have to take everybody out for dinner. Jamie Vasquez, is Jamie Vasquez present?
No.
Shamuun Ramrut. Laverne.
I'd like to thank Councilman Coleman and Councilman Waterman. You just don't know how much I appreciate my space in front of my house. They came Monday and put my sign that I thank you and I thank this council. It was, excuse me?
You're too close.
Okay, is that better for you, baby? Okay. But I really appreciate it from the bottom of my heart. It means a lot. Because with the liquor store right by me on the corner and the bodega on, it's hard for me to park when I go to church at night and come home. I sit outside sometime 11:30, 12 o'clock waiting for the people to come out of the liquor store after they close it at 10:00. They'd be, I guess, you know, in the back, but it's a hardship when I have church at night. And I do have it a lot, especially Thursday night and Tuesday sometimes. But you don't know how much it means to me to be able to park in front of my house. And I really thank you from the bottom of my heart for that. And the second thing is, Mr. Rivera, I thank you and I appreciate you and Chico. Next month I'll be doing my come before winter, my coats. I've been doing it for over a decade. These two guys have been a very big help. I give them out of mine. I don't give used coats. I try to encourage our young people and give them new coats. And the other thing is that with the abatement, I have to bring that back up again because what comes out of that, I know people are against it, but what comes out of it is jobs. If you get, three young men got shot within 28 hours just a week ago. One of them guys was already working for the Jersey City incinerator, but maybe the guy that shot him, if he had a job, he wouldn't have been trying to rob him. So what I'm trying to say, we gotta do more in our community and things like that. Let the developers know that there's people out there who need jobs. We can train them. I know when I did the Fred Martin building, PC Pittsburgh Paint, they was training young men how to paint. They painted that building. These were guys that had records and, you know, coming out of jail that we can give jobs. People give me so many resumes for jobs. I don't come down here for Laverne. I come down here for the citizens of my community and the city of Jersey City. My family, my mother raised 14 kids here. It's five of us less, but we're a big landlord in this city. My nieces, my nephews, the houses that my, we pay taxes. We taxpayers. I live in my sister's house right now. If she didn't own it, I don't know where I would live. Because my rent is $7.50. I couldn't afford to live nowhere. I had a house at one time, but I'm saying is that we need to work together more to bring this city back to like Martin Luther King Drive, the Dorfitt, West Side Avenue, Newark. That's why I'm proud about John Swift. We had the Dixie aid up there and everything is dead. We gotta bring the city back to life besides down here in Newport and let people be able to shop. We need to do like previous Mayor McGree we did in Woodbridge. We need centers here. We need recreation here. When they tore down our projects here, they brought nothing back. And more, every ward got a community center where kids can go play ball, boxing, whatever. Maybe these developers can get together, build something in Ward F or Ward A, a nice indoor community center of roller skating or indoor basketball court for, even down there in the park on Garfield. Maybe these developers can build a indoor area where their kids can go skating like we go to Woodbridge and do. You guys come with somebody, they arguing and fighting about the abatement. Maybe we can set up a fund for them to develop some community space for our young kids out of the abatement or whatever. But we need to do more. If we can put a roof on something in that new park down in Garfield. But just come together and thank you. I gotta go home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a blessing.
Clarence Manny.
Ms. Waterman, thank you again.
You have me far next.
Just what I like, somebody that hustles to the mic. Most people, thank you, sir.
You have me up here twice, only once is necessary. Again, my name is Clarence Manny. I live at 185 Nesbit Terrace in Irvington. And I work from home. I do a lot of business here in Jersey City. I work with Legal Shield and what I do is we provide families and businesses with identity theft and legal access. As I come to these city council meetings, not just here, but I'm in Maplewood, Newark, Irvington, you name it, I'm there. I'm hearing a lot of issues that are being raised before the city councils and a lot of these issues are legal matters. It's actually like 99% of this stuff is legal. And the reason that the residents bring it to the city council is because they don't know that a lot of the things that may be pertaining to them that they could actually do themselves. And a lot of times because they don't have any access. Well, what we are about is bringing that access to the community. I'll just give you a few examples and then I'm out of here. One example I'll give you is I have a client of mine who lives in Irvington, owns property in Essex County and they were working on the road and one of the construction vehicles hit her gate and that was it, took off. Well, she was able to get in contact with them. They did $900 worth of damage to the gate. The owner of the company said, hey, just bill us. Well, when she did that, they never called her back. Now, what do you do? Well, the average person, they're out. But what she was able to do was contact her law firm and they spit off a letter and was able to get her check for $900, which was pretty awesome. Maybe you guys are small business owners such as myself. With small business owners, we're, we have to not only be the people who go out and do the job. So we're the workforce, but we're also the sales department, the marketing department. And if something goes wrong, we have to be the collections and debt department or even the legal department. But what if you could pick up the phone as a business owner and contact your law firm and have them do the heavy lifting for you? And with this crime of identity theft, it's really affecting people. We've seen different rains that are taking place throughout the state. What do you do if it happens to you? I recently sat with a young lady in East Orange where someone went to the hospital and actually had an abortion in her name and sent her the bill for $10,000, which she thought was awesome, right? She got the bill cleared up. It took a few months, but what she couldn't clear up was the fact that they used up all of her health insurance for the entire year. She had no health insurance even though she worked a job. And even worse, they updated her MIB file, which is medical information file. Every time she goes to the hospital, she is now treated as a diabetic, even though she is not. Major crime, major problem. But what if you could just place a phone call and have somebody fix it for you? Well, that's what we do. Now, what I'm going to do is myself and my assistant will be here for a little bit. Please, before you leave, come see me. Get my business card. Let's exchange contact information. I do a free orientation in Essex County right at the DoubleTree Hotel off of 109. It's about 10 minutes from here. You're all invited. It's just invitation only. You have to see me. Again, my name is Clarence Manny and I'll give you my phone number. It is 973-985-8243. Write it down. Again, 973-985-8243. Thank you so much.
You, RL Williams. Kabili Tyari. Yvonne.
Yvonne Paulson. At Monday's caucus meeting, there was discussion about how much it costs for a parade of $35,000, $50,000. And I think it's a great idea you have these discussions on parades, but the one thing that you miss on this is the cleanup, JCIA. We also pay for the cleanup. So while we do have, it's on the backs of taxpayers for the parades, you should also ask what each parade costs in cleanup and have that cost. And I'm telling you, this has been going on for 20-plus years and we've been spending millions and millions and millions of dollars that should be going into our budget when these people retired. It should not be on the backs of taxpayers. Gentlemen, excuse me. I really can't, it's hard for me to speak when you're talking to me almost. So I applaud you for doing that, but we need to have, because we should not be bonding year after year for people who are leaving the city. Okay, the other thing I want to say is thank you very much that the city did not vote on, did not go through the issue of the garbage transfer. I'll be very honest, I was raised in Hoboken. And when I came to Jersey City, my mother wanted me to shop on Central Avenue for my back-to-school clothes. I hated coming to Central Avenue because Central Avenue was very close to Seacorpus Pick Farm. And it was an abominable smell to smell that, it really was. And when I found out that the mayor really wanted to do this without the public hearings, I was appalled. Because maybe you don't remember this, but I'm old enough to remember it. It was a disgusting smell. And it's the idea to have that so close to people in Ward A, especially the people in Society Hill, which is actually kind of two blocks from them. Not Society, excuse me, Port Libertate, two blocks away. I thought that, I thought the concept it was done, it was wrong. And perhaps you're not, I was raised when the PJP smell, I remember those smells. I remember Colgate and all the factories downtown. And I remember the Seacorpus, the Pick Farms and how it came all the way into Jersey City, especially the Heights area. And I was appalled that the mayor would do this. Really was appalled. Finally, I want to say this is that I understand the council president is not there, but he mentioned that we're getting $11 million from this abatement and only $8 million if it was taxed regularly. What he fails to say is how much money the school board is not receiving. We're getting more children to the school board and your funding has been somewhat on an even kill. They're not getting that much more as they used to in the past. So I'd like to know at every abatement hearing, what would the school board normally receive? Because when they go up, I go up. And those abatements are not paying to that. And I think someone is just ingenuous for the mayor to anyone to say, well, we get more money. When, it's not the city getting more money, it's the taxpayers. We get a higher bill from the board of A because more kids are here. So thank you very much. I really hope that you work on the issue of these parades. Thank you very much.
Anthony Cucci is not here. Clarence Manny made it onto the speakers list twice. John Frohling.
Good evening and thank you very much for hearing me tonight. Before I get into my main topic, I just want to mention one nice thing that's happening. I happen to know a young man whose name is Henry Greenfield. And Henry Greenfield is a resident of the city. Lives at 901 Summit Avenue. And he has taken a trip from Jersey City to Los Angeles to raise money. He's riding his bicycle by himself. He's right now in the state of Kansas and he hopes to be in Albuquerque in two weeks. And this is a good thing. He was born without hearing and he is, was a participant in a place to help people without hearing. And he's dedicated two months of his life to ride from New Jersey to California to help the theater group that helped him become a confident young man. He graduated from Lehigh with a master's in math and psychology. And he is going to be a math teacher in this city, we hope. So that's, his name is Henry Greenfield. My main purpose, thank you very much for listening to that. And when he gets to Los Angeles, we hope he gets recognized and gets back.
That comes out of your five minutes, so.
Yes, I'm going to be very quick, Mr. Byrne. I'm here as a representative for the Morris Canal Associates. This is a group that was formed 14 years ago to assist the city in the planning of the redevelopment of the canal crossing redevelopment area. And we have about 20 property owners. We are now engaged in the, I think, final resolution of the redevelopment portion tomorrow night. We have our annual fall meeting and we're going to recognize the assistance of our very wonderful councilwoman, Ms. Coleman, and we're going to recognize the president of your council, who's chairman of the redevelopment board. We're very much in the process of redevelopment. We have several representatives here, property owners, who will tell their stories. We're not through the fight yet with PPG. There are many, several property owners who are uncertain whether they're contaminated. All the property owners in that area have been hurt by the elongation of the cleanup process. Their businesses have been diminished. There are some health issues that are there. But, and oh, I want to say thank you for the help we have gotten from this council and also from the counsel, legal counsel for the city. There seems to be one problem that I'd like to leave with you. And that is that there is a lack of a communication process. The property owners have been left out of the process of the communication with PPG. And we ask that give some thought to a mechanism where we can be brought in and be a better part as people that have paid taxes for many years, employed, I believe, over 1,000 employees, very much friendly with the city, and yet we're ignored in the sense of not participating fully. So I want to thank you again very much.
Thank you.
Was I on time, Mr. Byrne?
Sir. Richard Bass.
Mr. Bass is not going to be here.
Thank you.
Nor is Mr. Chesler, his mother.
Thank you. Steve Parness.
Good evening, councilwomen, councilmen. My name's Steve Parness. I'm a property owner on Pacific Avenue in Jersey City. I want to thank you for the opportunity to address the council. In April, my company was designated developer to develop my property in the canal crossing redevelopment zone. And I thank the council for their confidence that they placed in us. And just wanted to tell you a little bit about what's going on in Pacific Avenue and the problems we're facing to touch on what Mr. Frohling had said. We have a problem with PPG and it affects all of us. It's particularly affecting my ability to develop the property because of the cloud of uncertainty that is cast over that whole neighborhood. I have found it increasingly difficult, almost impossible, to entice developers to come in and put down the amount of money that's going to be necessary. So we can use some help in reining in PPG and trying to keep them to some sort of schedule. Addressing other issues here, we're looking forward and exciting to get this project off the ground and be the lead property in the redevelopment zone to get this last huge bastion to be online and become a productive area of the city. We pay a lot of taxes, the different property owners. My particular property bill is over $40,000 a year. And we're kind of feeling left out in the cold. So we're hoping that everyone here will lend a hand and perhaps try to help us rein PPG in and push this process along. Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Would you mind sending an email or an official letter kind of outlining some of the things you said tonight, just bulleted?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jimmy Smith. Justin Murphy.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to let us speak. I'm here with, also with Steve and John. My name's Justin Murphy. I'm representing the Halsted Corporation. We are a manufacturing and distribution company of textiles. Our company is family-owned and operated. I am third generation in the business. We have been in Jersey City since 1927 in the same exact location on Halliday Street. 78 Halliday Street is our address, right at Halliday and Carteret. We employ about 50 employees. Most of them live in Jersey City and pay taxes in Jersey City. And we have basically been held hostage by the operation that's going on with PPG. To give you a little bit of background, the court order that exists today for the cleanup operation was issued in 2009. At that time, our property had not been tested for contamination. We were told for several years that we were not contaminated even though we're about 10 feet away from the main site. In 2012, PPG came in and did their first round of testing. We didn't get those results for about six months later until 2013 and they showed elevated levels of hexavalent chromium underneath our building. The legal limit is 20 parts per million. That initial test showed samplings close to 1,000 parts per million. We met with PPG. They told us that they couldn't necessarily say it was their chromium. They needed to do additional testing. And the DEP backed them up on this. They came in in 2013. They did another round of testing, which disrupted our entire business to have them come in and do a full-scale test on over an acre of property. We got the test results back a few months ago, probably close to a year ago now, and there is elevated levels of hexavalent chromium, over 2,000 parts per million. We've been told by PPG this entire time that they are adhering to the court order. The court order, which was supposed to expire in 2014, at which time they would have moved on to properties like ours that are in flux. Little did we know that the court order would be extended last year to 2015 without any notification to any of the property owners around. So without adding any of the properties which their own testing showed excessive levels of hexavalent chromium into the court order, they extended their ability to leave us out for another year. How is it impacting our business? It's a nightmare. Every time they want to come in and test, we have to essentially shut down our shipping operation and move everything around for them so that they can drill. I have 50 employees in a factory who held a meeting with PPG where they came in and said, everything's fine. It's safe for you to work here. Yet when they come in and do work and they find yellow stuff coming up through the floors, they then come back in in protective suits in order to. they then come back in in protective suits in order to epoxy those areas. So, on one hand, they're telling our employees it's totally safe, but yet, when they come in to epoxy, their employees have to be in protective gear. I want to expand our business. I'm third generation. I want to move to a larger facility, hopefully in Jersey City. I want to hire more Jersey City employees. I can't sell the building, I can't rent the building, and we can't get PPG to acquire the building because of the court order, which was extended by the state and the judge, without adding any of the properties that they now know are contaminated into the court order. We need your help. We need an ally here. And I'll stick around if anybody would like to talk any further.
John Lynch? Not here. Jason Berg? Jason Berg?
I'm a resident of Jersey City for sixty-one years. I've done a lot. And of the sixty-one years I've been here, I have been the caretaker of St. Agnes Islands, which by neglect of the city makes me the owner of the property. I had the opportunity to plant some of the bowls from the Jersey City Parks Association. Thank you very much. I got twenty-five and twenty-five bowls, fifty bowls planted. I'm very happy to be able to do my service to the community. I'm also the National Liberty Alliance New Jersey State Coordinator, and it's Hudson County Coordinator. And I was voted in as the grand jury administrator for New Jersey. What does that mean? Common law is the basis of this state and this country. Without common law, you wouldn't have an oath of office to abide by. Without the common law, we wouldn't have freedom of speech. Without common law, we wouldn't have common sense. Yet, we are deprived of justice in our courts because they are not serving us. They are giving us something called, under the color of law. They say that they don't recognize the Constitution. Yet, without the Constitution, there is no laws. Code statutes and ordinances are for the employees of the sovereigns of each city, state, and within the nation. There is no United States of America without the state's approval. Laws are there to protect and serve, not to abuse and neglect the people. There is a good old boy network, which is still here. The amount of corruption by our judges, the prosecutors, and the American Bar Association is rampant. The National Liberty Alliance has filed papers with the federal courts of crimes that were committed. Yet, no one is signing off. And technically speaking, when you don't get, when you're not given an order to sign, you're in bad behavior, which actually removes you from your title of being a judge, which actually you are, magistrate. Now, I have been fortunate enough to be working on Shake and Wake Radio, where I am a host from Mondays and Tuesdays, I mean, Mondays and Fridays, from two to four PM. The format is liberty and liberation. It's very important that we hear each other. But unfortunately, there's too much hypocrisy going on. As much as I write things in the past, they are disasponent as they were, as they were written maybe twenty years ago. I have three minutes.
Those no way.
I just put in a time clock, huh?
Seven thirty, forget, keep...
All right. Now, there's a big thing, I always say, is social capitalism. What is it? It's basically an economic system that benefits everyone. It doesn't profiteer like the imperial capitalist system does. It's based on creating jobs, working with each other, and making things better for the people. A factor that's very important...
You have precisely one minute.
One minute. The enemies of unisubordination are houses of hypocrisy, religion, dogma, nationalism, war, isolation, racism, extermination, death by executions. Each realm of the hypocrisy works against progress of logic and fellowship. We are blinded by a quick fix, fast work, and glamour of materialism and impulsive sex. The weapons against hypocrisy is positive aggression and social capitalism. Positive aggression is focusing one's hate into a creative force of love. Feeding industries of progress are the war machines, war manufacturers, warlords, black markets, drug traffickers, organized crime, illegal waste dumping, et cetera. And the biggest legalized crime family in the United States is the federal government under RICO. People, I say a lot, and I'm over my time, but please check out...
Martha Larkins?
Thank you very much. God bless, and power to the people. John Lynch?
Martha Larkins?
Anna Kooch was a fine woman, the first lady of Jersey City who died tragically while her husband was mayor. And she was from South Greenville. Despite the fact that this room is named in honor of a fine woman, this is not a hallowed chamber of good government. Plenty of criminals sat in your seats. If you Google corrupt Jersey City politicians, it doesn't come back, no records found. So, please don't be so arrogant. You're not so special. You're here to do a decent and honest job for a quarter of a million people who are all too used to being lied to and disrespected by our elected officials. Two weeks ago, eight of you were here and heard from several citizens who waited five hours to beg you to postpone a vote on a resolution that had only been announced two days before. The resolution primarily affected Greenville Ward A, the proposed recipient of garbage, and Ward C, the proposed recipient of a new park. Ward A Councilman was unavoidably absent and had no prior knowledge of the resolution. Ward C Councilman vehemently opposed its passage. Several of us sat in this room and heard what you heard. Greenville and other residents, full of questions, begging for you to wait to vote on this until our council, until our ward had representation, and until we all had more information. Two councilmen, Yun and Bajano, heatedly expressed disapproval of the resolution. And Councilwoman Waterman abstained because she didn't have clarity on the issues, which is understandable, because no one had enough information. Yet, the other five councilmembers thought it was perfectly fine to go ahead and pass it. What were you thinking, especially Councilman Rontsch and Councilwomen Osborne and Coleman? No one from Wards A or C voted for you, yet you thought it was perfectly fine to vote against the wishes of both the A and C councilmen on an issue that did not affect your wards. I voted for Philip. I ran and won as committee woman on the Philip team. I gave a significant amount of money. I worked fifteen-hour days at the polls several times, and I returned to the payment they gave, back to the campaign. I walked door to door in my neighborhood. I convinced neighbors, and I convinced very good friends of mine to vote for you. I have several of you in my home, and I don't appreciate being made a fool of. I don't want to fight with you, I want to work with you. Our community wants to work with you. We want to plant officails in the park. We want to work with the police to help fight against crime. We want to work to get a farmer's market. We want to promote the history of the area and promote local ethnic restaurants. We want litter-free streets, and we're willing to work to get that. We're willing to work very hard, and we have been working hard. But give us a fighting chance. We want to know that you're on our team. And two weeks ago, you scared us. We don't deserve that. Nobody does. We have been strong allies. So, don't mess with us. We can be even more formidable foes. We are old-school Jersey City. We are Greenville. And we are very, very, very weary of being fooled by politicians.
You have one minute, Martha.
We don't expect you to always agree with us, but we deserve due process, honest, complete, and timely information. And we certainly deserve representation when you're voting on something of critical to us. This is a great quote I want to read. "Accountability and transparency need to be more than just words thrown around during the campaign. These ideals are the foundation on which government is built. Without them, everything else administration does will be questioned." Many of you should recognize that quote. It's the first paragraph from the Philip platform on government that you ran on. Unfortunately, you messed this up two weeks ago. And just as Philip predicted, everything else you do now, we suspect that you might be doing badly. We're watching you, and we look forward to the day when you can regain our trust.
Thank you. Philip Carrington?
Hi, yeah.
Felicia Collis?
Hi.
Thank you. Teresa Patterson? Okay, councilmembers, that concludes the speakers list. We are to the petitions and communications, item six A through six Z four. Officers' communications, seven A through H. Reports of directors, eight A through F. Councilmembers, we're going to do the claims last this evening. We have a payment on, that is contingent upon the approval of a resolution. So, we're voting, councilmembers now, on resolutions, ten A through ten K. Councilperson Gudziewski?
Hi.
Ram Chao?
Hi.
Bajano?
Aye.
Yun?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Lavarah?
Aye.
Nine zero for A through K. L through T, councilperson Gudziewski?
Aye.
Ram Chao?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Yun?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Lavarah?
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote for L through T. U through Z four. Actually, councilmembers, we did vote earlier on the judge. So, we had voted, oh, no, no, we didn't get there yet, I'm sorry. U through Z four, Y and Z have been withdrawn.
Great.
Yeah.
Y and Z withdrawn, U through Z four, councilperson Gudziewski?
Aye.
Ram Chao?
Aye.
Bajano?
Bob, can I just ask Mr. Farrell a question? I know you pulled Y and Z, but I don't understand, being involved with the union over the years with the police department, I don't understand why we always have to go to outside attorneys when we have twenty, eighteen or twenty attorneys upstairs. I mean, the cost of these attorneys is astronomical.
I just want to be clear, Z wasn't pulled. Z eight is pulled.
Yeah, Z eight.
Yeah. Z eight or Z?
Y and Z.
Z eight is pulled.
Z eight.
So, then that's a mistake.
Y and Z?
No, Z's not pulled.
Well, it should be pulled.
I was handed...
Y and Z eight.
I was handed Y and Z eight earlier.
Oh.
Wait, Y and Z eight?
Yeah, Y and Z. Y, Y and Z eight.
Just Y. Yeah.
Okay, we got to redo that vote.
Aye, aye, aye. Sorry.
Really, I mean, I think it's...
Wait a second, councilman.
I keep mentioning all these outside people, lawyers from Elizabeth here and there, and yet, we have, like I said, eighteen or twenty lawyers upstairs, and we're spending, technically, probably over the years, a year, millions of dollars on outside lawyers. And they don't even come from Jersey City.
Okay.
Just Y was withdrawn. So, councilmembers, I want you to affirm your votes. Councilmembers Gudziewski and Ram Chao, on...
Ten Z.
Ten Z.
On ten Z, Y was withdrawn.
Aye.
Councilman Ram Chao?
Aye.
Councilman Bajano, can I have your vote?
No, and I think...
No on Z, how about the rest?
And Z four, no also.
And Z four, no also. Z and Z four, no. Councilperson Yun?
I don't believe in pre-trial.
Councilperson Yun?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Lavarah?
Aye.
Y withdrawn, D and Z four, eight one. Councilperson Bajano, voting no.
They no to these things.
D five, the balance of business, Z five through Z nine. We did six earlier, eight is withdrawn. So, we're actually voting on Z five, Z seven, and Z nine. Councilperson Gudziewski?
Aye.
Ram Chao?
Aye.
Ram Chao?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Yun?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Council president?
Just on Z four and Z five, which we already voted on, but just reminding everyone that Tuesday, November fourth, is election day, to go out and vote, and urging folks to support ballot question number one and two on the ballot. I vote aye. Jeremy?
Wait, 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 wait one second, please. We have a nine zero vote for those resolutions. We have the claims and addendum number one. Councilperson Gudziewski?
Aye.
Ram Chao?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Yun?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Lavarah?
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote for the claims and addendum number one. To adjourn this meeting at seven fifty-three.
Motion.
Seconded by councilperson Osborne, seconded by councilman Ram Chao. By acclamation at seven fifty-three PM.